One of the first charges we were given was to compile all the values and everything that community gave during the forums to try to come up with belief statements. These were beliefs that the entire community felt were the basis behind our education system and also our entire community. The first one, as you can see, says we believe in the worth of dignity of each person. One of the things that the strategic plan wanted to stress was that each individual student, stakeholder, parent, community member was, had value in essence in him or herself. The second, we believe that all students, and notice that all was underlined, believe it or not, we actually talked about this for hours, what that meant and how important that was to all of us. All students are entitled to the opportunity to maximize their talents and abilities. We didn't want to necessarily focus on just academics. We wanted to look at each individual student, to take that person as far as he or she was willing to go or able to go. Third one, we believe that students thrive in a learning environment that facilitates self-discovery, exploration, and intellectual risk-taking. We wanted to go beyond just learning the curriculum, really to be able to apply the learning and what that meant in a lifelong process and maybe establishing the lifelong process. Fourth, we believe that a quality education is a lifelong process that fosters academic and cultural understanding. It was very important that the community let us know that they felt education does not begin and end in the Hopewell School System. It starts at a very, very young age and it continues throughout our entire lives. We feel that teachers, parents, grandparents, the entire community is learning at all times. Fifth, we believe that the effective education is shared responsibility by all persons, groups, and organizations within our community. One of the most important things that all of us got out of being on the Strategic Planning Committee was understanding that education is not simply the responsibility of just the school board, of just the teachers, of just the parents, that every person who lives in this community is a stakeholder in what happens to the students who go through the schools here. Whether you have children in school, whether your children have gone through the schools, whether they're upcoming children to the school, all of us are creating members of a society and all of us take an important role in establishing that. Sixth, we believe that we have the obligation to nurture a culture of respect that honors the uniqueness of the individual and fosters responsibility toward the community and the environment. This is a mouthful, and I remember we wrestled over this and we wanted to show just how important it was to us to understand just how unique each person is within this community. And also to make that person not just an educated person to his or her own means, but also to become a viable member of this community or any place else where that person might travel throughout the world. And finally, we believe that an effective educational system anticipates, plans, and acts in response to a changing world. One of the most tremendous challenges we have as teachers, as parents, as educators, is how rapidly the world is changing. All of us have seen tremendous growth even in the last couple of years. Technology-wise, our own children have surpassed us at a very early age, and we wanted our students to be totally prepared to face the world and all these changes that are coming up. So we struggled. I believe this was the first part of our strategic plan, and we worked for hours and hours on coming up with belief statements that would reflect not only what we as members of this forum felt, but also what reflected the entire values of all the community. And then these became the stepping stone, if you turn to the next page, for creating a very important mission statement. I can assure you that you had 37 minds working hours on hours and weighing each word in this mission statement. This was probably the most contemplative piece of the entire weekend. In fact, it was one of the pieces when we came back two weeks ago to revisit, that we went over and over to make sure that each word was exactly as we wanted to say, because everything from this point on stems from our mission statement. And I'd like to share that with you. The mission of the Hopewell Valley School District, in partnership with the community, is to provide a comprehensive, caring, educational experience. Now, if you notice the key things there, partnership with the community, that reflects the belief statements, that education is not simply the goal of the school, it is the goal of the entire community. In partnership, as you can see with Bristol Miles Scribs, we also were at Merrill Lynch, we had community leaders with us, we had, this was a true melding of the minds. Comprehensive, we realized through our discussions that education is not nearly meeting the core curriculum standards, that there's a lot more that happens in the school buildings than simply the fundamentals or the basics of a core curriculum. A caring educational experience, we wanted each student, each child, to feel that he or she is being met with a caring, loving attitude, and they are seen as individuals. And then to look at our bullets. First of all, this experience will nurture the unique talents of each individual. Again, there's that recurring theme that are found from the belief statements, that each student is important in his own entity. Secondly, creates a fulfilled socially responsible lifelong learner. Again, to reflect on the belief statements, that learning is a lifelong process that we perhaps only simply begin to start in our school systems. Third, it develops confidence and capabilities to face the challenges of a rapidly changing world. Again, notice the reflection to the theme, the world is constantly changing. Our students, what might be top-of-the-line knowledge today is drastically changed tomorrow by the time they hit college or the workforce. And finally, it promotes a culture of respect which values diversity. We felt it is very important to include that in our mission statement, because we go well beyond, as I mentioned, the core curriculum standards, to actually allowing our students to become viable members of the community. And as partners, we will provide, we struggled over this, we had attempted to provide, we will try to provide, and then finally, we decided it was most important for us to say we will provide. Sufficient resources and a talented, committed staff that creates a safe environment where all individuals flourish. And in that powerful closing statement, again, all the themes are reflected. We are partners. By placing in our mission statement that we will provide sufficient resources, this makes a commitment of the community, of the board, of the teachers, that provisions will be there. We are not just talking, we are backing up with what we say with the support that is needed. Talented, committed staff, we, those two adjectives, I think were probably the two hardest words to come up with. We wanted staff that was talented, and by talented, we meant all types of personalities, all types of people who knew their stuff and really were committed to teaching. And committed was the key word, they were committed to helping their students become the best that they could be. And finally, a safe environment, which in this world is a very important issue. When we send our children to school, we want to know that they not only are safe, but they feel safe, they have a sense of an extension of what they may have at home. And finally, all individuals flourish, and it was key, again, to put in the word "all" and "individual" together, that each person was looked at as an individual to be taken as far as he or she will go. So everything from this point on is based on our mission statement.
Can we set down a look at the mission statement and determine what we should use as our primary group for the mission statement, who the mission statement's really geared for? We're thinking about Hopewell Valley Regional School District. And within the school district, there's a number of different things. There's communication with the community, there's staff, there's curriculum, all sorts of things. Well, we decided that students are the most important, because in a school district, students are what the school district's about. And a school district's measured by the quality of the students. So in generating this goal statement for students, we were thinking about how can we have the students achieve our mission statement? How can they become what our mission statement is? Jen?
The main goal that we came up with was to engage students actively in the learning process while they are working to achieve their full potential as competent, respectful, socially responsible citizens. And this all ties together what we thought we want our students to be like.
And after developing this goal, we created a number of strategies, five of them in total up there, and there's numerous others. But out of those strategies, we picked two as the main ones that we thought we should focus on for the next couple of years that would really help this goal become a reality and would really be the most successful. The other ones are still important and will be carried along as time goes on, but two are the most important. Jen?
The first strategy that we decided to focus on was we'll challenge students to think critically, solve complex problems, and reflect on their own learning. And through this, we will use essential questions to help students gain a deep and personal understanding of academic content. And the essential questions are basically the underlying theme throughout the curriculum. And we will develop strategies to help students learn from setbacks and failures. And the second strategy to focus on is that we will give students access to curricula and instruction that meet their individual needs in an engaging environment. And this focuses on the electives and the classes that they're interested in and that caters to their individual interests and needs.
And some of the other statements that we had up there, the strategies, one was having adequate technology for the students for the ever-changing world, which we thought was very important, that's going to come along through time. Another one was to create an ongoing set of activities and things for students, but that, again, goes on throughout time. The two are the most important that Jen stated. And the last one, we will revise and enforce a more efficient attendance policy, is also very important, but the two that Jen stated are the most important to achieve this goal. And that's what we have for the students.
The program goal has to do with what we provide with our students in the curriculum, in the classroom, and as a district. Our goal one is to provide a wide array of instructional programs that assure core competencies and nurture the unique talents of the individual, and that are regularly revised to meet current needs and anticipate challenges. As you can see from the goals, we're not only looking at what we value as a district, but also setting new standards for ourselves that we can achieve. John will talk a little more about some of the strategies.
Thank you, Kat. And in response to David's earlier question, as the groups rotated and examined goals and strategy development, there were a lot of competing proposals, as you might imagine, both as to nomenclature and semantics as well as to substantive questions. And in this case, in the program area, the overall Strategic Planning Council has prioritized three strategies. As you can see, there are additional strategies on the page which are carried forward, which are not a priority at this time. And Strategy A, which is prioritized by the committee, we will regularly review and modify our K-12 curriculum to ensure an effective, comprehensive, and coherent curricular program that, and then the bullets, ensures our students demonstrate competency in the New Jersey Core Content Standards, addresses educational research, anticipates societal and workplace needs, eliminates redundancy, and guarantees relevancy, connects learning across subjects, builds deep understanding of content areas. And clearly here, the aspirations of the overall group were to exceed New Jersey's Core Content Standards and to respond to the thrust of our mission statement to develop the unique talents of our learners, to make them socially conscious, empowered, and capable of responding to an ever-changing world. Strategy B, we will provide a wide array of developmentally appropriate electives, co-curricular, and extracurricular activities to allow students to develop their unique talents. And again, you hear the refrain, clearly, the refrain from the mission statement. And C, we will ensure that the staff learns to adapt and modify and communicate the curriculum to meet the needs of students with disabilities. Again, a refrain from the mission statement that all students are valued and that all students are part of the mission statement's expectations in terms of their ultimate competency. The goals below are not currently prioritized, but were among the select goals selected that weekend by the overall committee. We will integrate and model life-work skills as part of our educational program, and the bullets, hopefully, yes, the bullets are on your sheet. We will utilize existing post-high school educational resources to enhance learning opportunities, and we will create interactive student labs to explore unique talents and courses.
Goal two under programming is to provide and regularly review a wide and relevant array of extra and co-curricular activities at all levels that foster lifelong learning by nurturing the unique talents of each individual and promoting social responsibility. I would like to say a word about some of the language that you find in the goal statements and in the strategies. We were very careful to honor the belief statement. We were very careful to listen and honor to the language that came to us from the community. And we took a long, careful look at everything that we were doing. I was part of a group that was developing the mission statement at one point, and we had the wall papered with the language of the community, and we tried to incorporate that. We also were striving for consistency in our language throughout the work. So if you'll notice that some of the language that we use, like words like "unique," words like "talented," words like "individual," are to promote this consistency, to show that we have strength of mind, to show that we were careful about the language that we chose.
Having asked about the ones, I won't ask about them again.
In support of goal number two, we developed four strategies. The first strategy, Strategy A, is the one that we are going to focus on for the next three years. It's the one we've prioritized, but I will read them all to you. It says, "We will create, in conjunction with community partners, an array of co- and extracurricular activities, such as recreation, social personal enrichment, community service, academic enrichment, tutoring, in order to foster lifelong learning and social responsibility." B, we will develop existing property to enhance and enrich recreation programs. We will, C, we will review district-supported co- and extracurricular activities and apportion resources to ensure that age-appropriate activities are offered at all levels. And D, we will build this community-school recreational center to hold concerts, sports events, lectures, plays, programs, club activities, to display student-community artwork and create a positive place to go to meet and greet. Obviously, we're choosing to focus on A, because in the next three years, there's just so much we can accomplish. But again, the spirit of this goal was really that we hope to not only nurture academic abilities and excellence, but we hope to nurture the whole child and develop multiple talents, not just academic abilities, and ensure that our children go up to be socially responsible members of their community.
I think that when we look at program, which the group just spoke about, we often look at the what and the how of education. But we all know intuitively and based on research that the "who" may be the most important part of the educational process, and that's why we devoted a specific goal to staff. The language here, each word is important. I'll read the whole goal and then talk about some of the parts and a few of the strategies that we deem to be most important as a priority in the next few years. To have a staff that is a community of creative professionals who are sharing, interactive, collaborative, and reflective, and who provide a caring, innovative, educational environment. A community may be the most important word there. I think many schools are places where teachers work in isolation and come together only in the parking lot at the end of the day. That's not the vision we have for the staff at Hopewell Valley. We want a community of professionals who do come together to share, to share formally and informally about their professions and their lives, who interact with each other, with the community, with technology, with the world, and who bring the results of that interaction back into the classroom and into the school, who are collaborative with each other in that they team teach, they share ideas, they share responsibility for students. Reflective, the research has shown that that may be the most important quality for a superior teacher, is the ability to reflect on lessons and learning, on what they're doing well, on what they may need to improve. And so we felt it important to include that word in our goal statement. And if we have all those things, this community of creative professionals, we want them to provide a caring, innovative educational environment. Caring is not thrown in there sort of haphazardly just to ensure that we have touched on that. We spent a lot of time as a group talking about the need for staff to truly reach out to children beyond what they do based on the curriculum, that emotions are the gateway to learning for our students, and that we need a staff who truly does care about them, and that we need to have standards for what that care even looks like. And so you'll see farther down in some of the strategies that we do look at, at actually putting out for our professional staff, what it looks like to be a caring professional. Innovation was another word that we talked about. We look dynamic, charismatic, a couple of other words. We wanted innovative. We wanted staff who, much like we talked about with the students, being intellectual risk-takers, we wanted staff who felt, exhibited that same value, and were willing to take risks in their teaching and to try new things. So innovation was important. There are 10 strategies listed here, and there are two, the first two are highlighted for us. The first one will not come as a surprise to this board, because they have been hearing many of us talk about the need for time for our staff to come together. For quite some time, you've been hearing us reiterate that desire. If we are to truly have the collaboration, the sharing, a sense of community among the staff, we do need time for them to come together on grade levels within schools, across schools, to be able to talk horizontally about the curriculum and vertically about the curriculum. And so we put that one in there to prioritize time in the existing staff development schedule for sharing and collaboration, and to provide the opportunities and vehicles for staff to be more reflective practitioners, and there's that sense of reflection again. That is something that we can do, not just individually, but as a group. And so you will see in our, some of our recommendations from the Elementary Review Committee later on this month, some suggestions for providing that kind of time for staff. And then the second thing has to do with recruitment. I think probably the most important responsibility for the school principals in this district is to hire quality people. And so we have as our second goal to continue to actively recruit and hire quality staff through job fairs and other appropriate avenues. The job fair we held for the first time this year in the district brought close to 200 candidates to our doorstep. We also need to reach out and travel to other places to find quality candidates. They are out there, this is an attractive place to teach, and we need to keep actively searching for the staff who reflect quality, not only in their classroom practice, but in their ability to really care about kids.
Well, there are three goals for the resources, and one of the most important goals, which the district is struggling with right now, I'll read it, is to have a self, I'm sorry, to have a safe, well-maintained, optimally sized, and appropriately equipped schools that provide adequate and flexible space for students and community members to learn, play, and socialize. That's a very important goal, as we all know, and I'll go over the strategies, but I think the reason for this number-one resource goal is to, rather than us just attacking these problems as they come up, the goal was to lay out a plan, for a long-range plan, so we don't get flat-footed for all these problems that we're having with overcrowding, not enough space. And even keep in mind that the community is involved in our schools. They have extracurricular activities in the schools, they have volleyball, they have social clubs, and that we kept in mind also with the size of the schools. The first strategy is to, we will prepare, implement, and evaluate the five-year maintenance plan and revise as necessary. That definitely got on the top of the list, because that's one, I think we all know, we struggle with. And we definitely need a plan to be laid out, so we don't stop running into the problems of running a fire drill all the time. The second important one was, we will anticipate future facility needs, student population, and best learning experience. Again, it's not only just the population, but the whole entire learning experience. If it involves extracurricular activities, as in basketball, or soccer, or whatever, we need to have the space for that too, not only just the books in the classrooms. The bullets will explain some of the strategies of that. In dialogue with the staff and community, so when we talk about this space and overcrowding in the future, that we involve the full staff and the full community. To have a policy on class size based on educational research, not to just pick a number out of the size, we like the number of 1,000 for a size of a high school. Use a little bit of educational research to come up with those numbers. Provide appropriate space and materials for all programs to function optimally, including the high school hallways and storage of students' possessions. And I think that our students that were involved definitely had their say in that one. That was brought up quite frequently, that we don't forget the space just in the halls and storage for students. And proactively address and resolving overcrowding of all district facilities. And this happens not only for just the schools, but also the administration building and the maintenance building, keep all those things in mind. Those were the two important ones that were picked for that goal.
Resources goal two is to create an open financial process that engenders consistent community support through broad-based participation in planning and cost-effective funding of district programs. The district intends to accomplish this goal through the strategies, which include inviting and welcoming the inquiries into the financial process, and by responding to those inquiries in an open and timely fashion. The district will also institutionalize the inclusion of parents, community members, and staff in the budgeting process, and will work on the strategies for cost-effective funding by soliciting alternative funding, pursuing grants, and generating partnerships with businesses. This particular goal upholds the public's right to have access to public information and records, and in addition, it expands upon this right to include whole public involvement in the district's budgeting process, as well as whole public knowledge of district finances. This goal is also very closely linked to the district's communication goals. Genuine, open, honest communication related to the district finances is essential to building and retaining public trust, and public trust is the foundation for a successful public school district.
Resources, whether they be fiscal or human resources, are a critical component of the success of any public school district. It came up over and over again in our meetings, how critical community buy-in is. If you want to have fiscal support of your school district at referendum time and when bond, we call them levies in Ohio, we call them bonds here, referen, I don't know, linguistics. But at any rate, community buy-in is absolutely essential to have a successful school district. So as we were working and we rotated, as it was explained to you, each person participated in each goal. We had a rotational system, and so there was input from each and every individual of the 37 in every area. So by the time you got to the final room, after you had been in four rooms for the 20-minute period of time, all your ideas were up there. A lot of times, you said, you know, you saw ideas that you bought into or you felt were very critical. So it was kind of easy in this area of resources to see a pattern evolve, come out very quickly, and that was, we need to get community buy-in, we need to have everybody behind the school district. So, goal three states, we need to establish an ongoing cycle of evaluation that reconciles changes in the community with the intent of the strategic plan, that anticipates, a critical word there, that we anticipate the financial impact of the plan, and we regularly communicate, and there's that word, "communicate" again, the impact to the broader community. We want to be proactive, we do not want to be reactive. We want to anticipate population growth, technological changes, we don't want to be playing a catch-up game. And to do all those things, we need human resources in place, financial resources in place, and community buy-in.
I'd just like to introduce myself. I'm Alice Carter Huston, and I am Hopewell Borough Council member, and also a part of the Strategic Planning Group, which I found to be an incredibly active, very dynamic, very upbeat, a good group of people, I'd do it over again, and that was a long weekend, I got news for you. The food was good, but you gotta remember. So I'm here to present to you an overview of communication, and I have to do it succinctly, so I have probably 60 more seconds' time left. If I can get anything across to you, it is how dynamic we were as a group in coming up with these ideas, to share with you, to communicate with you, to help you think about where we're going in the next five years, how can we communicate that to the public, and how can we include the public in that? So we spent very little time coming up with goal number one. That just seemed to come out of the group. It was to create schools that are resources for the community, and a community that is a resource for the schools. That seemed very logical, it seemed sensible, and it seemed doable. When we got to goal two,
When we got to goal two, we were hunting around as a group, thinking, oh my God, we got to have at least one more goal. And in your very able plan already was a public relations plan, so we thought that was really critical, and a lot of what goal two encompasses is something that you're already doing. We just want to take that and make it more active, make it more dynamic, make it happen so that the community is involved and we're there with them. And that was to create an effective, open communication process that values all voices and creates a trusting, positive relationship with the community. And there were seven strategies, two of which we spent a long time coming up with as a priority. We just thought they were all important, but we did our checklist, we did our homework, and that's where we arrived. So without further ado, I'm going to turn you over to the other two members of the communication team, will tell you about the goals.
There was a businessman, Warren Buffett, and in one of his books, he wrote, "You make a living by what you get, you make a life by what you give." Once again, you make a living by what you get, you make a life by what you give. That quote by Buffett summarizes what we're trying to do with goal number one. Create schools that are resources for the community, but more importantly, a community that is a resource for the schools. We plan to accomplish that through two major strategies, A and B. Strategy A looks at utilizing all community human resources and volunteers, such as senior residents, the churches, small businesses, and the service clubs, to enrich the academic experience of all students through four various ways. One, linking community partners to curricular and co-curricular activities, such as internships and field trips. Two, inviting citizens to serve as consultants, mentors, guest lectures for staff and students. Three, creating an exchange visitation program between school staff and local businesses. Four, working more closely with the municipal alliance to offer programs and establish opportunities for community involvement. The second strategy, B, looks at creating additional, once again, additional opportunities for community members to use the school resources, i.e. computers, physical education facilities, fitness centers, and consider community service volunteers as instructors during those actual resource times. C and D are not priorities for this upcoming year, but they are part of the plan, and they will be looked at, possibly revised, when the time arises. I will turn it over now to my colleague for goal number two.
Questions?
Oh, questions?
I tried. First was goal one.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's do goal two.
Thank you.
My name is Becky Taylor, and I am here as a parent of a third grader in Hopewell Elementary, and also as a representative of Bristol Mary Squibb. And I first wanted to address your concern about communication in general in this process and to assure you, last is not least. And I really go back to the entire process that Dr. Sopko and Bill Hill started when we engaged in this in the first place, which was, not only would we take a look at where we are and where we want to go, but very much of an emphasis on getting the community involved. And I think that was very, very important, and to us at Bristol Mary Squibb, that was why we wanted to provide the support that we did for this, so that from the very beginning, we wanted the community involved. And I think community involvement connotes openness, dialogue, teamwork, collaboration, all those things that are so important for communication. So with that as a backdrop, I'll go to my particular goal and strategies, which is obviously to have an effective, open communications process. What, the first thing we said was that we want to identify more and better opportunities, both electronic and traditional, for effective communication between among students, staff, administration, board, and the community. And I think for myself, as a professional communicator, I always am grappling with the importance of saying your message over and over and over again in as many vehicles as you possibly can, and I think that's what we're trying to achieve here. The second key point that we want to focus on in terms of a strategy is to develop a community relations plan for each school in the district. And really what we're doing is, we're building on a lot of successes that are already, we see on a regular basis at our individual schools and through the superintendent's office, and through all of your involvement with the communities. We want to have regular coffee clashes at each of the schools. We would like to have a principal advisory group with parents and community members, promote other ways of two-way dialogue, include student representatives, and of course, include a mechanism for dealing with outside criticism and feedback on the staff from parents and/or students. Those were our two major goals. Those were the things that we think we can achieve within the next year or so. There were many other things that we wanted to do, and it was just hard to say which things we wanted to do first, because there's so many good things to do. Eventually, we would like to have a corporate group comprised of various corporate representatives to meet regularly with the Board of Education's Community Relations Committee. We would like to have regular community forums focusing on special issues. We would like for the Hopewell Valley Foundation to work with corporate contacts to assist the district in its efforts in long-range planning, facilities, budget, and special activities. We want to have, develop an ongoing working relationship with our elected officials in each of our municipalities, and we want to publish more information about our alumni in various vehicles.
Okay, just to start off the hair to what Bob said about the process and how the process got started, it really actually started almost a year ago with some conversations around, well, how do we know where we're going, how do we make decisions, you know, how do we know what's the right thing or what the community really wants? And that process, when Bob came on, I guess at the beginning of July, kind of expanded to more and more conversations about, through the members of the board, some conversations in the community, and started to pick up a little bit of steam. I think late July, early August was the first time, as a board, we actually discussed the notion of doing a strategic plan, and some of the merits of having one, and how that would take us forward. In October, we actually went through a workshop where the staff, administration, and board members got to at least sample what the strategic planning process might be like, what it might feel like, and what some of the results might be. And then, as you saw, we had the presentation in December that kind of kicked off this process and started moving it forward. And then from there on, we went through our community forums, our weekend, and culminating in the presentation tonight. I think it's fair to say that next election, that's probably the single largest concerted effort by input into this school system that we've ever had. And I think that's a real important thing for us to keep in mind as we take this process forward and take it to its next step, that this does represent an enormous community effort, as Bob mentioned, for the 400 people in our community forums, you know, our strategic planning committee, steering committee, and of course, the strategic planning council. You know, all have put in a lot of effort, a lot of thought, and a lot of heart and soul into coming up with areas and inputs that will help move us forward. So what do we have when we roll all this stuff together and look at the plan? I think, at least the context that I put it in is that we have a story. There's a story that begins with "we believe" and describes what we believe. And hopefully, we'll end with providing a caring educational experience that creates a safe environment where all individuals flourish. That's what I think we have at the end. And in between, we have a set of statements about how we're going to get there, goals that have to be put in place in order to reach that mission, and strategies that need to be executed in order to do that. I think at the end of the day, that's what we have, and it was created by us as a community in the Hopewell Valley regional area. So what are the next steps that we have to go through in order to make this real? Well, part of it is accepting the plan and embracing it as the way we're going to make decisions, and as embracing it as the sets of activities we intend to take on in order to reach that goal. If we use a strategic plan as effectively as it can be used, and what really happens is, as we as a board, as we as a community, as we as students in this community have to make difficult decisions about, or any decisions really, about what we're going to do, how we're going to take a program forward, which program we should select, which teachers we should hire, what curriculum we should do, what we should do with our special needs students, anything like that, we should be looking at our mission statement, we should be looking at our belief statements, and using them to guide us in making those decisions. I think we've done that intuitively in the past. What we've gotten now is a very explicit statement about what we believe, what our mission is, as a guide to help us making those decisions moving forward. In terms of the actual goals, what we'll do going forward is have Dr. Sopko and whoever he drafts start to develop action plans to execute the strategies in order to try and achieve each of the goals that have been articulated in order to move us forward along with our mission. I believe we're going to come back with those strategies in September and review those both with the Strategic Planning Council and then with the board, and then bring that back in the fall, I mean, in the spring of next year, to see how far we've gone, how we're doing against the plan, and then to fine-tune it again as we go forward. I think one of the important points here is that the Strategic Planning Council, by and large, has said, yeah, we want to participate in this process, we want to be part of it on an ongoing basis. They were only asked to really come and help us for the weekend and work through the program, but it's really germinated into a much bigger, much richer commitment than that. So I think those are the next steps, I think those are the things that we have in front of us, and it certainly might hope that this mission statement and the beliefs and the goals are seen everywhere we go in our community, everywhere we touch in our school systems, so that every time we're making a decision, we have a framework for that decision, and we know what we're about. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Could I have a board member that would be willing...